Okay, we'll open the special meeting tonight for the Murfreesboro City Council. It's five o'clock. We're gonna talk about the West Park. Mr. Lyons, I'll turn it over to you.
I'll be very brief and turn it over to Mr. Goodwin and his team. We wanted to have this workshop to talk about the West Park. This has been some period of time since we've briefed the council, so today really is an update and really to talk to you about the process that was used to identify potential sites and also to talk about some of the needs for recreational facilities in our community. So, we're not asking for any decision on a site or any final decisions today. We really look at this as an update and briefing. You all may have questions that, you know, staff will take away from here and run answers down for you, but we wanted to start really at the beginning of the process. So, Mr. Goodwin, Mr. Code will be speaking to you about that.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons, and good evening, Mayor McFarlane and City Council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to talk about the potential for a park in the western portion of the city. That's something that we have been talking about as staff and as a community for over five years. And I know we've been talking about additional ball fields for over 10 years. And I can think about some of the plans that we have looked at. One of the things that we do as a staff is we go through and we do assessments. And in the notebook that we provided for you, you can see the assessment that we did for a potential park on the west side. And what that shows is a couple of things. One is we're way below capacity in terms of national standards, but it also shows you the need for additional park space and additional park amenities. And of course, all of you know, we've, we're in the middle of 2035 plan. The 2035 plan, Chapter Six, which deals with parks and recreation has been done. And it also verifies those particular facts. Now, when we did our park assessment, that was over five years ago. And we've had people in the community, every time we do a survey, it always comes out. We had over 100 comments in one survey that asked those particular questions about, are we going to build a park in the western portion of the city, et cetera. Of course, Murfreesboro, I know Mayor McFarlane refers to, Murfreesboro is basically a city within a park, and we're proud of that. People in Murfreesboro enjoy their parks. And in the council, this council, in the past councils, city manager, and the administration has always been supportive of parks and recreation. And we're fortunate that people in our community enjoy the parks. And that's one of the reasons that we are over capacity, because if you look at national averages of national participation in those particular areas, we're above those participations. But what that does is it really puts a strain on the facilities. When you're over capacity, that makes it very difficult to maintain. It makes it very difficult to provide those services. And I know that we turn away tournaments. We turn away people that want special events. I know that leagues are capping their numbers. And so, it is time to look at that. If you look at comparable communities, Williamson County, for example, I know that in their comprehensive master plan for their community, when they went through and looked at how many ballparks that they had, or how many baseball softball fields, the national average for that is one ball field for every 2,500 people, softball, baseball. What they did is they said, our numbers are higher than that. So, we're going to set our level at one field for every 1,500. So, you can read in their master plan that they actually lowered that number to meet the capacity of their participation and their demand. Right now, we've got 20 fields, which makes us, by national standards, 28 fields in a deficit. If you look at what 2035 says, we'll be 91 fields in deficit, or 71 short from the standard. And that means that we really need to think about where we're going in the future and what we're going to do with that. Just to give you a background, just briefly, Mr. David Code is here. In 2012, we put out an RFP to try to hire an architectural engineering firm. We went through that process. Kim Lee Horn of Nashville was selected. Kim Lee Horn actually produced a request for proposals to seek land in the western portion of the city and put it together in evaluation process, which he will talk about. But one thing of note, we, the last time we built a baseball softball field, and I know time passes when you're having a great time, was in 2000. That was a little over 15 years ago at Barfield. Soccer fields, that was 2005, so that was a little over 10 years ago. So, in this year's CIP budget, we allocated, the city allocated $10 million as a placeholder for the purchase of land. And I know we've talked about this, as has been to the Parks and Recreation Commission. It's been talked about publicly in our 2035 plan. But we wanted to give you an update tonight on where we are, where we've gotten to, and the process that has driven us there. And one of the things I want to show you, and if the cable could pull up the first slide, what we've done is, and we did this five years ago, if you look on the screen, what you'll see is you'll see the different parks. And we use concentric circles and used basically a five-mile radius. And you can see the parks starting in the north, lining up to the south, and then what we proposed would be the West Park in the western portion of the city. One thing to note, in the census that we looked at five years ago or so, we knew that the western portion of the city was growing. In 2014, the census said that we had 118,000 people in Murfreesboro. I think now it's 125 or so, based on the latest trend. Here's what you have to think when you're dealing with a park system. We have 30 to 40 percent participation that is coming from the county. So, the service population for the parks, really, if you want to reflect it correctly, is about 160 to 170,000, because we have a lot of other people that are coming to the park system, not only from the city, but from the county as well. So, that adds again to the impact. So, if you compare those to national standards and what we need to do in terms of meeting capacity, then that speaks to that. I'm gonna ask David Code if he would come up and go through his portion of presentation. David?
Thank you, Lanny. Good evening. My name is David Code, and I'm with the firm of Kim Lee Horn and Associates. And I appreciate the opportunity before this council, again, as I have been over many, many years. As Lanny was talking about, I was involved in the Seagull Cup soccer complex development. I was involved in McKnight Soccer Complex. I've probably been doing business with the city of Murfreesboro for some, it seems like a little longer than that, but 25 years. And so, I appreciate the opportunity to continue that relationship. In 2000, as Lanny said, back in 2013, we were selected with a team of individuals to work on this future west side park. And one of our memos that we've done, we kind of outlined the rest of the team. A lot of those are locals, between Host and Steele, Johnson Bailey, Weiser, Greg Zamoni, Greg Peck and Associates. We're all part of a team, a unified team, because we understood how important it was going to be to evaluate parcels for selection of this property. This was one of the first times the city didn't have a parcel already identified. They were going out into the community. And so, we wanted to make sure we had people on the team that understood roads, sewer, other infrastructure issues as we started looking at the evaluation of how these parcels would come about. In about November of 2013, we put an RFP out. We went out and solicited proposals from landowners. We sent it out to, and I will show you, let me advance this slide. Don't push it all the way down, okay? Okay. We went out to the general area. The city of Murfreesboro had identified the general area for this proposed park and some of the conditions of the park itself. So, we put a three-page proposal together. They went out and solicited a request from landowners to come to us, who had either individual parcels or wanted to combine multiple parcels that fit within the criteria. You know, some of the criteria that we had set was size, suitability, and all for pieces of property. We got 19 responses back from that, which was very good. And it came from a range of sizes and parcels. So, we went then and put together a evaluation form. And in general, the evaluation looked at several things. We created a matrix of about 100 points, and you've got the detailed matrix in there. But to go over the general parts of that matrix, we looked at a criteria that ranged from accessibility to existing transportation system. We knew that this parcel was going to be a large regional park that was going to have tournament-type facilities and was really going to set a piece of what is going to be the future of the west side of Murfreesboro. So, we wanted to make sure, as we looked at that, how accessible was it to get people in and out of your community. A lot of residents and a lot of residents from the county are going to be coming, but also as a tournament facility. And so, we wanted to make sure people had easy access. Another one was access to utilities. Again, in evaluating these parcels, we wanted to understand what it was going to cost to get either transportation or utilities to these sites, because that needed to be a factor in it. It's one thing to be able to get a piece of land donated to you, and then your costs are associated with getting infrastructure and utilities to it. It's another for you to go out on the market and buy a piece and then have to go in and look at what it costs to get those utilities and services to it. So, we wanted to evaluate those at the beginning of the site. We also looked at site suitability. Again, this was suited, needed to be suitable for a large regional park that had open space, but also had sports fields. It had to have parking as well as other built facilities. So, we wanted to make sure the suitability of these pieces fit within the general guidelines that the city had and what they wanted to see in the park itself. Financial benefits and other intangibles, obviously, if you can get property donated, that may rank it a little bit higher. So, we had about 10 points in there that was really based on what people felt. And we had six people on the interview, or the review for them. We had a couple from the city itself, and we had a couple from the consulting team itself on the interview, or the review selection for the process. And then size and shape. Obviously, you can get a big piece of property, but if the shape is very narrow, you can't put sports fields on it. If it's not size enough for 50, 100 acres, it doesn't suit the needs. Those had to come into the valuation. So, we looked at all 19 parcels, and we came down with four preferred parcels. And this is maybe hard to see on the screen, but I think you have the information in front of you. So, if you look at the parcels there, the yellow is the parcel sizes. Very easy to see. The ones in red are the four parcels that were identified as the top four pieces. And the ones in blue just add up to the rest of the additional parcels. So, if you look in the middle of the picture, you see one large parcel, which is about 522 acres, right off of Highway 96. And it became our first parcel that we felt like it had received the most points. And again, as we evaluated, everybody evaluated each parcel separately, and then we combined all the total numbers together to rank the parcels. And there's a whole detail in there about what all the rankings and all were. But that parcel allowed us to have several things. It was a great location. It was in the center, the heart of the desired acquisition. As you looked at that earlier map, you know, it's right in that area that we felt like was the most appropriate for the regional park itself. It was very suitable for athletic fields, but also had some terrain in it that allowed us to do other opportunities within a park itself. Being 522 acres allowed us to have both active participation sports fields, but also passive open space. So, if you wanted to do a Fourth of July and you want to have a big venue for open space, it allowed us the ability to do that out there as well. It had great access to Highway 96, as we said. And then again, because of its size and shape, it allowed us to have the ability to have various uses on it. Again, as you're looking at parcels and you're looking at the west side of Murfreesboro and your growth area, having a parcel of such large size allows you to plan now and then build out in the future and not lock yourself in. Parcel number two is 336 acres. It was still a good parcel itself. It was a little bit to the south and outside that general area itself. It did have some, it was close to Highway 99 and Veterans Parkway, and had fire stations, some other things located next to it. It was just out of the general proximity of the area we were looking for, and so that's very close, but came in number second. Parcel number three is up there on Highway 96, so it was still close. Had good, strong location, but it was landlocked. As we looked at this, there was going to be an inability to expand over time. It was 111 acres. So, as you start looking at doing a five-field complex and all, you can immediately fill that location up with nothing but recreational facilities and be done with that parcel. So, while it was good location, some other things were suitable, it really got to be landlocked and no future potential for expansion. And again, that was the issue with that one. And then parcel number four is very close to the very north of the image and all you're seeing. It's 237 acres. It was a lot of multiple parcels had to be combined, put together. It was mostly flat. It had, again, smaller parcels. And then we knew, just generally in that area, there'd been some other sinkholes and all, so without doing further research and all, we knew there's a possibility of some of that, but felt like it was still worthy to put into the top four. And we went to the top four, and all of them can have a ranking to them, but those are the ones that really stood out, had the criteria, met all the guidelines that we were looking for, and really felt like they would serve the purpose of Murfreesboro. Some of them with 522 acres for a much longer time, but even the 111 acres may be suitable for the present-day need that you currently have. Any questions on that? And I'll turn it back over to Lanny. Well, thank you very much. We certainly appreciate your time and attention on this and look forward to helping and assisting you move this project forward.
Good afternoon, members of council. As you know, we are in a fast-growing community, but I wanted to help put a little perspective in how quickly the demand for athletic fields has grown over the past decade. There are 12 organizations that we partner with to help provide programs and athletics for our citizens in addition to the ones that the city runs itself. Of those 12, 10 of them rely on either baseball, softball, or multi-sport turf fields. Of course, this, currently, we are operating with 20 baseball, softball fields. But I'd like to make note that when we built fields in 2000, we built eight fields in Barfield Crescent Park. Three of those were little league fields. Those are the only little league fields that we have grassed in fields within the city. And then we built a regulation field. So, after building those eight fields, the city lost four additional fields after those were constructed. So, while we built eight, we lost four. One with the construction of Patterson Park, we lost that field. The Corps of Engineers project at Oakland Manor caused us to lose two fields there. And then, of course, Adams Tennis Complex was built. We lost one small utility field at Old Fort Park, bringing us down to 20. There's a significant number of kids that are playing baseball and softball, both spring and fall. And the leagues are, at this point, having to cap their numbers. So, there are kids that are not being able to play ball, are not able to play within the city. And of course, we hate to see that. But the biggest issue is once the season starts in baseball, softball, there is no opportunity for practice. And those of you that have coached, finding a practice field in mid-March till the end of June is virtually impossible. Now, we do utilize the city schools and attempt to practice there, but they're in need of significant renovations. And while playing conditions are somewhat adequate for practice, for competitive teams, which is the current trend, they're nowhere near where they need to be. On top of the need for baseball, softball fields, the last multi-sport or soccer fields that were built were within the construction of Seagull Park in 2005. Once Seagull Park was built, soccer moved into that facility. The city was allocated the eight fields at McKnight Park next to the airport. That brought the grand total of regulation soccer fields within the city to 17. And then there were four additional fields that we were able to do modified games, modified fields, or even able to play our youth football on. Since then, though, because of expansions at the airport, we've lost one of those fields, and we're projecting to lose two more in the next couple of years. So, the number of fields that, each time the city builds fields, we find ourselves losing fields in other capacities. And it's, on top of citizens, some not getting an opportunity to play, we have an overwhelming demand for tournaments and facilities for tournaments. Last year, we hosted 68 tournaments. More than a dozen of those were soccer or multi-sport field tournaments. The rest were baseball, softball tournaments. This year, we anticipate having to turn away 30 to 40 tournaments that could bring sales tax revenue into the city. We, staff is working tirelessly to schedule out everything. At some locations, there is not a moment's rest for any of the baseball, softball fields. This leads to maintenance issues, leads to quality issues, and we stay on top of it to try to prevent any safety issues. But I think the citizens of Murfreesboro are accustomed to having high-quality athletic fields, and to maintain those at that level, we're simply overplaying them. And I think we've seen that with Seagull Park and the high demand that we've had there. We've had a significant amount of usage at Barfield Crescent Park, too. Anyone goes out there in July during the summer months, the common area is a telltale sign of the amount of traffic and the amount of usage that facility is getting. So, there's certainly a need, and we can certainly show that the standards set forth in the 2035 plan are justified. It recommends that we add 26 fields to meet the need in just baseball, softball fields alone, and I think 17 soccer fields. Are there any questions on the demand and the current usage?
It seems like that criteria is awful high. Do our, do our sister cities around meet that criteria for ball fields, the number?
Some of the larger cities do. Not every city, particularly in Tennessee. Now, if you go out west, California, you go to Louisiana, some of these mega complexes, they are starting to meet those needs. But, you know, the standards are set based on how large your population is, and a lot of the cities in Tennessee are struggling to meet that. I know Gatlinburg and Pigeon Forge have combined together to build a facility to meet their needs. So, several of them are building, Jackson, Tennessee is another one, that has built significant facilities to meet their needs and to meet those standards.
Thank you.
Thomas, you mentioned Severville and Pigeon Forge. I know when we look at parkland, we're building it for the citizens of Murfreesboro, is the way I look at it. When we, when we're trying to develop a park, I want the people who pay for it to use it. And we've already acknowledged the fact there, y'all have made the statement, that 40% of the people who use our city parks don't participate in paying for the parks. They pay sales tax when they come to town and stuff, but, but they're not paying property tax like the citizens of Murfreesboro. Is there any point at which the other communities start charging a different rate for people outside the city limits to use those facilities? For example, I wouldn't expect for me to go to Severville, Gatlinburg, and look at their facility and say, it's free to me. I should just show up here and use it. I mean, there's, I assume if they have a tournament, there's fees and stuff that are charged that offset some of the costs. But even, even so, if they're just meeting the standard, is it right for me to show up there and go, you know, I want my kids to play on your fields, and they're really nice fields, and I appreciate you building them for us. But where do you draw that line as to how much service we should provide for the citizens of Murfreesboro versus how much we should provide for the middle Tennessee community?
Well, at this time, we have no rate. I know a lot of cities do have a county fee, a separate fee for county residents. And Murfreesboro had that probably 15, 16 years ago, and it was abolished. I think the way to look at it in terms of building a new facility, the Chamber of Commerce in Rutherford County has labeled Murfreesboro as the sports capital of Tennessee, or Rutherford County. The economic impact associated with some of the tournaments that we host are so significant that it offsets those costs. Now, we collect field rental fees, and we'll generate a little over $100,000 in field rental fees for athletic fields this year. And that's direct revenue to the city. But you also look at the Chamber's report that's estimated those same athletic fields generate about $33 million in economic impact. Translate that to sales tax directly to the city, and it comes out roughly $25,000 per million that would go directly to the city. So, I think that's how we could offset that cost. The issue we're experiencing now is the citizenship, there's not enough fields to host tournaments in addition. You know, we, everybody that is involved in soccer is passionate about soccer. Everyone that's involved in baseball is passionate about baseball. But how does the citizen that doesn't have kids or doesn't have anything to do with soccer, baseball, see a return in their investment? It's through hosting these tournaments, putting folks in the hotels, the lady at the restaurant that's getting an extra tip, or the gas stations that are lined up. Those are the ways that we see the average citizen see a return on their investment. But when we're maxed out of capacity, we're unable to offer those tournaments, and we're simply playing rec ball to just provide for the usage there. We're minimizing that opportunity.
I guess I would still say that I've got a problem if my son's little Johnny and he doesn't get to play on a ball team, because we tell him we don't have a field for him to play on, yet we've got fields out there that we've got tournaments playing on every weekend that are kids from out of town playing on them. I see a contradictory thing there, and I get the economic driver part of it. I think that's a good thing. I'm glad people come to Murfreesboro. But somewhere, we have to evaluate, who are we actually building these parks for? And I think that's one of the things we need to focus on when we're looking at not only location of them, but I know the 2035 plan seems to be diversifying our intentions of saying that we need to have more neighborhood parks and more walkable parks. And yet, here we sit tonight, looking at what is basically a presentation that is saying the best location in Murfreesboro would be a mega park. And to me, that's contradictory to what the 2035 plan's saying. I mean, I'm excited about the vision of, we've got people coming, and we need to prepare for them, and the growing population. I just think it's awfully challenging when you, when the 2035 plan is saying almost the exact opposite in, as far as where these parks should be located. They're saying more neighborhood, more diversified parks, and here, the number-one choice on here seems to be a 600-acre mega park. And I mean, that would be one of the largest parks that we've ever had, I guess.
Well, keep in mind that the Blackman area, there are no facilities in the Blackman area, not a neighborhood park, not a playground. There's nothing there. However, over the last 10 years, the population in that area is roughly 40,000 people. That's more than the city of Smyrna. So, you've got a city there with nothing. And if you look at the geographical location of our other parks, you take Sportscom and McKnight Park, you take Barfield Park, we're meeting a geographic scenario. If we were able to put another park, a larger park, then we would have a park within roughly five miles of every citizen. And then focusing on the plan that we've done for the city schools... And then focusing on the plan that we've done for the city schools to add neighborhood parks in addition to that, the, the mega park is going to fill a need and a void across the board, whether, both with our citizens and also with the, the economic impact that, that we all enjoy. But this, the neighborhood parks is, is also going to be critical within this plan. We're not saying we need to build one mega park, and then our, our needs are satisfied. You're absolutely right. Parks that we can walk to, parks that your kid can go down the street and practice ball, and those are essential. But I think we've got to start somewhere, and we are at such a deficit. To build one or two fields here and there is simply not going to solve the problem.
About how many, I, I was trying to calculate last night how many square foot there were on a, a regulation soccer field. Is it about one-point-three acres or something like that?
Right. To do a soccer field right would be, roughly need two acres. What we would recommend in this is that we build fifty, forty to fifty acres of turf that's lighted, and then we could go in and lay out fields based on the need. Whether we need small-sided fields, we see wear patterns, we could rotate those fields, move those fields, use portable bleachers so that we're always able to move them around and never have to wear out one particular field, we're able to move that around.
I understand exactly where you're coming from there, as far as a football field and a soccer field and maybe a cricket field, I don't know. But, but a baseball field, you don't have the ability to move it around. I mean, when we're looking at the baseball fields and stuff, we're, we have to be looking at something like a Starplex or something like that.
Right.
Or a couple Starplexes even.
Ideally, what we would like to build would be a six-field complex, three of them sharing the same parking area where you'd have close to eighteen fields, one location that would handle any tournament that we, any national tournament, international tournament that we would want to host, but it would also give the adults an individual facility to themselves. Adult softball is limited to sixty teams each season, and we could double that easily. And in the spring, they play at three separate locations within the youth parks, play right alongside Little League, they play right alongside the, the kids at Barfield, and then they utilize Old Ford Park, the field there in the spring. And then in the fall, they utilize Starplex when Little League is not in season. But to be able to give a, have a complex for the adults of Murfreesboro to be able to play. The Stones River Kiwanis Club, they're continuing to grow, they're capped out at where they're at. And so we would be able to move them into a six-field facility and allow them some growth. That would also allow Little League to grow, because they would be able to move down to the four-field complex, move their soft, their T-ball and coach pitch down there, allowing them area to grow. And by being in the Blackman area, that would relieve some of the pressure that's being put on NBA or Murfreesboro Baseball Association at Barfield Park, because one, the adults wouldn't be in there. That'd give them another field back, a multipurpose field. And then allowing, we have an overwhelming number of travel teams here in Murfreesboro. Murfreesboro alone is more travel teams than rec teams. When I give you all those numbers, not counting all the travel teams that go to tournaments every weekend, they have nowhere to practice. Our office is inundated with phone calls on a daily basis during the peak months of travel teams needing somewhere to practice, a field to utilize. And we would love to rent them fields, and we do as much as we possibly can, we simply just don't have the space for that.
Thomas, what's the status of the Jordan Farm fields and the school fields?
The school fi-
So I, I was curious as to why, why that's not even mentioned in here. You know, we're, we're talking about, as we talk about the, the turf fields for soccer and football, you know, we basically got fifteen or seventeen, something like that, I guess now. And, you know, I think my, the way I recalled it was, we're basically talking about five or six at the Jordan Farm, six plus another possible six to ten at the schools around town, just depending on how the layout shakes out. So, I mean, essentially, we've already got plans in place to almost double the amount of those fields that we've got. I'm curious as to why that's not even mentioned in here as far as the assessment of what, what's needed in our town.
And remember, that assessment was done five years ago. The, the one that, the park assessment, West Park assessment, we did that five years ago. So we put that in there to show you there was a need five years ago. We've been talking about it for five years. You're right, the Jordan Farm, we've got that coming up, January twenty-seventh, I think, at BZA. And they're going to act on the zoning for that, but that would be something. Here, here's what we do, and I don't want to get caught in the weeds here and talking about what's going to go at the West Park and so forth. Because the way we do parks is, number one, we've got to get land. That's, that's the first part. We've got to get land. We've got, and whatever size of property that we get will determine what we put on that property. What we do is, we go through a process, and we engage our citizens in that process. We engage user groups in that process, and we come out with a potential master plan. Generally, we'll have three or four different concepts when we do that. And we'll have our open public meetings, we'll bring it to the Parks Commission, we'll bring it to the council. There's a process that we go through in determining what we need to put in that park. I think what Thomas is trying to get to is, is the fact that he's under a lot of pressure in terms of trying to juggle things within his division in athletics and try to make everybody happy with the limited resources that he has. And I appreciate his, his forethought in trying to think in the future of how we put parks together and the number and how it would serve the best. The, the one thing that we want to make sure that when we do this, we do it right, and that we provide the facilities that we need here in Murfreesboro for our residents. The balance of what we would have, if you have a school park site, then there's a lot of limitations. We can't get on till five or six o'clock in the evening. If it's not lit, when you go in daylight savings time, you can't use it. So you have to look at limitations on those particular sites when you start thinking about them. The other things that you have to think about is how much can they be utilized for league play? One of the things that the leagues will tell you, it's kind of the eighty, twenty, ninety, ten rule, that twenty percent of the people do eighty percent of the work. And they just do not have enough personnel to scatter around and have games at different sites. That's why they like to have five, six, eight-field complexes, because it helps in terms for them, for supervision. And we ask in our agreements with each one of the leagues that there be a supervisor on-site from the league at that facility. And we ask them to meet a lot of different things in terms of supervision and different regulations that are now placed on us for different things. CPR, cardiac arrest, concussion, all those kind of things as well. So they need personnel on-site. If you're scattering them twenty places around town, it makes it very difficult for them to do that, makes it difficult for us to do that. So having facilities that have multiples makes it easier in terms of management and supervision. But again, I didn't really want to get into the weeds so much tonight with what would be there, because I think that's in the future. What we want to do is, we want to say this. I know when I came up to the council many years ago, back in two thousand, and presented the Barfield Crescent Park, and we were doing the eight-field complex, Mr. Young asked me a question. He said, "Mr. Goodwin, how far in the future does this take us?" And my answer was, "Mr. Young, this really kind of gets us back to even." And Mr. Shacklick can appreciate this. I know when I started in Murfreesboro, we played four days a week. We played Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, and we reserved Wednesday and Saturdays for rainouts. And, and it was easier to maintain the fields. It was easier for the league organizations to maintain their league, because, you know, there wasn't such a demand. Now, you hear the reflections of some of the things that Thomas is talking about. We're playing seven days a week. On Saturday, they're starting at eight in the morning, they finish at eight in the evening. And if it rains, they're out there till ten. And a lot of these school kids are not getting home till ten-thirty or eleven at night on school nights. And you see the league starting, they're wanting, they're, they're coming to us, asking us to start in January. We've already gotten requests to start. We're trying to push them as much as we can to the end of February, first of March. And then they play all the way through, the soccer does, through Thanksgiving. So that's a capacity issue. And so those are the things that we'll need to look at, but we can't even start considering capacity until we have land that we can sit down and start looking at, what can we put on there? What is it that is the biggest demand, and where does that take us in the future? Because what we've always found ourselves in, in parks here in Murfreesboro is the fact that when we get a piece of land, we build it out. We don't leave anything for the future. I know Mr. Code alluded to the fact that you can, with a big parcel, you can plan part of it, and you could leave part of it undeveloped, and in the future, you have future development sites. So those are just kind of the things we want to pitch out tonight for, for your consideration.
I understand our, you know, what we're going to be charged with in this is to try to prioritize, you know, what, what's out there. And it's always easiest to go with the biggest, most giant, most expensive thing that covers the most people. That's easy. I mean, that's, that's an easy answer, you know? I mean, that covers more people, that covers more kids, that brings in more money, more tournaments. But we may not be able to afford the most giant thing in the world. So what we got to try to do is make sure we're looking this in a way where we can actually have the data and have the information, where we can make, you know, sound decisions that cover particularly our citizens, just like Eddie was saying. You know, the, the fact that, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying. I think everybody up here pretty well understands. I mean, we're, we're, we're getting pitched on the idea that we need fields. I think pretty much everybody already has the idea that we need fields. What we got to try to figure out are, what do our options look like? What would our option look like on lot number fourteen? What would our option look like on lot number eleven? You know, what would those things look like is more? What would they cost? How much of our population would that cover? You know, what kind of participation rate would we have with our city citizens? And the idea that we got roughly half of the people who come to play on these fields are not city citizens is, is clearly bothersome from a standpoint, if we're talking about spending thirty million dollars, that's fifteen million of those dollars is being spent on non-citizens, however you want to look at it. That's the way it shakes out. So, you know, we, we got to incorporate all that. If one of these lots, I mean, like, to me, the naked eye, just looking at the ones that are closer to town, that might, you know, might be smaller, but also might have a higher participation rate. I mean, there are advantages of that from a tax-paying standpoint. So to me, I think everybody understands we need more fields. I'm, I'm, I'm interested to hear it, and I know it. The reason I asked the question that I asked is because when I'm trying to formulate the idea, this kind of this chicken-and-the-egg thing of, well, based on how much land we get, that's going to determine what we do. Well, how, how do we know what we're supposed to be planning for if we don't even know which land? I mean, it's a, it's a difficult thing for me to kind of sort through as far as which one of those two things comes first. So I guess why I asked the question was, I didn't see anything in here about it. I'm, I'm, I understand that the study was done five years ago, but these letters were written this week. And so I'm thinking, okay, we already knew about it, already called Rob and, and asked him to have this addressed tonight before you guys got up there. And so I'm not trying to throw any surprises out there. What I'm curious about is if, what impact does already us doubling our fields have? That might help us prioritize which piece of property we need. That's, that's all I'm saying. And so I, I, I just don't feel like I'm getting a good handle on that, I guess. So for tonight, I'll tell you, I know we need fields, and I want to help. But I just want to make sure we do it in a reasonable, financially sound way that, you know, gets what we need and, and serves primarily our citizens, or we need to couple that with some way to help fund it.
And, and, you know, we hear you loud and clear about, you know, making sure that we're providing space for our residents. I can look up at the council, and all of you have been active in youth sports, coach, travel teams, and otherwise. So you've seen it firsthand. When, each year, Mr. Goodwin's going to sit down with the leagues and make sure that those leagues, Kiwanis, Optimist, NBA, the soccer group, are going to have their, their time allocated for, for play. But we also know there's been benefits for the tournaments, so we work them into the calendar as we can. So we, we clearly are going to make sure we're taking care of the Murfreesboro, you know, kids who want to play in our sports leagues.
And I can certainly sympathize with Thomas. I mean, I, I understand what he's being charged with, and the, the significant lack of fields that we have right now makes this stuff very difficult. I, I get it. And I'm, like I said, I want to help, but we got to figure out the best way to do it.
We're already addressing that. I mean, we're, we're pursuing fields today, not just this plan here, but we're working on them.
Talk about, it doesn't bother me that we have tournaments and people coming out of, out of the city to use the fields, because that's, that helps our small businesses. That, you know, that, that's tax revenue, and that's one of the things that, I think, while we've not had a property tax increase is we've been able to use sales tax. What does get me a little heartburn is when, you know, we have other local governments that are coming and taking monies, money away from, for instance, city school system. And we're hitting our city schools, saying, "Okay, we're not going to share this anymore, but yet we have a ten-million-dollar budget that we have, or eight-million-dollar budget that we have for our Parks and Recreation Department." And we say, "If you live in Rutherford County, come one, come all." So, you know, and I, I'm all for, I think we need to be good neighbors, because that's part of the, the deal. But it needs to be a give-and-take, that we, we work together on that. And that's, when we look at this type of expenditure, there has to be some kind of realization within the county that we look at, and, you know, I don't know what the county Parks and Recreation Department budget is. That's, it's not very much, but that, you know, we're going out predominantly in a county area and building a park. And there has to be some realization on that, that that's a benefit for the entire county. And, you know, I, I don't know if that's-
It's part of it, for sure, yeah.
But what has changed significantly is, when, when Sportscom was built, it was pretty much out on the edge of town. But that was when annexation was pretty much freely taking place. The world has changed in the last couple of years as far as the municipality is concerned, and we are not going to continue to grow. And we're almost in violation, in my opinion, of what the intent of the, the law is that says you're not supposed to create islands and you're not supposed to create donut holes. And, because we're talking about with one of these presentations, that's presented as being the most desired land acquisition area, it's in the heart of it, but it's not even in the city of Murfreesboro. And so I, I, I struggle with the presentation that's given to us that says, "This one's great because it's desirable, and it's not even in city limits." And then we've got some up here that are closer to city limits, and, and we've got comments on them that says, you know, "It's a hundred acres," or "over a hundred acres," which is larger than the Sportscom facility, property. And we're saying, "It's not really that good because it's unable to expand." Well, of course, no property's probably going to be able to expand if it's surrounded by residential, but that's who we're providing these parks for. It's for those residents that we're building these parks. So I don't see that as a negative, although in this presentation, it comes back with the intentions of saying, you know, "These are difficult lands to deal with, because they may be close to neighborhoods, and, and they may be restricted on their growth." I, I think that's exactly where we should put them, and, and I'm not sure that putting them all in one place is a good thing. I mean, it, I would much rather pursue a couple properties that would be a hundred acres each than to pursue one property that's six, six-hundred acres, that's not even in the city. It, to me, that makes sense, because you, you start looking at what we've got at Sportscom and all the facilities we have there. You know, and truthfully, we, we pretend like we don't have a park on the west side, but one of our largest parks is Barfield Park, and, and it is on the west side. I mean, it's, it's, it's on the west side of the interstate. The interstate's not the Berlin Wall. I mean, it's, it's easy to get from one side of town to the other side of town and, and use the facilities. I mean, just because a park's located in western Murfreesboro doesn't mean that it's not going to be- not going to be used by all of Murfreesboro, I hope. And, you know, we've got Segal Park out there on the north side, but that doesn't mean that people from all over the city don't drive to it and use it. I mean, we still travel to use our ballparks. And it, I just, I like the 2035 plan in the direction that it's trying to send us, I think, is to diversify these mega parks. Don't do this. I think that's the exact wrong direction for us to be going in, when, you know, if it's, I don't know what the ratio for parking is in comparison to the size of the ball field, but if you, if an acre and a half will accommodate a soccer field, then, you know, for twenty soccer fields, you're looking at thirty acres, that leaves seventy acres left for parking and facilities and a walk-in area and spectator areas and stuff like that. That seems like a lot to me. But I think the game changed completely when we were prohibited from annexing, because, I mean, if we were going to say that this is part of Murfreesboro now, and we're going to grow to that at some point, that would be feasible, but I don't see that anymore.
Mr. Smothers and I agree with you. When we went into this process, what we said was, we didn't know what we were going to get. It may take two parcels, it may take three, it may take four. We just need some land. I mean, we need some land to expand on.
And I think we all support that. We understand the need.
I see, Mr. Code, did you have something to...
Yes.
I'm, I'll add my two cents in, just because I do park and recreational planning all over the southeast. I've done it for years. As we look at communities and comprehensive plans that look at park expansions and all, you are seeing a trend for more discussion about back to the neighborhood parks. You know, there was a trend away from that because associations, eight YMCA, other people were building other types of facilities. You had homeowner associations that were building tennis courts and those kind of facilities. And you're seeing a little bit trend of going back to these smaller parks, which is all good and fine, because you need those different sizes. But I think as you look at the advantages and disadvantages from these smaller neighborhood parks, those smaller neighborhood parks generally have playgrounds, they have walking trails. They're made for the neighbors and that, and they're not made for sports fields in a lot of cases. And the more you have those, you have to all look at the offset between those small parks and then your maintenance people, they have to get out to all those small parks and take care of that. So, as you look at a mixture of those, small parks and these larger parks, these larger parks help before you get a facility, like Segal Soccer, we're able to have a large facility, you had, citizens are using that, leagues are using that, we had a neighborhood area that was able to use it. We had some issues with neighbors because of lighting and all, that we had to discuss with them early on with some buffers. But you have a maintenance facility out there that you can bring two staff members out there and maintain that facility much easier than having multiple parks, and they've got to go around to the different facilities. And so I think, you know, in the comprehensive plan, as they look at it as a whole, because the park piece was just a piece of the comp plan, you have to look at how that balances with the other facilities you've got and your long-term maintenance. With any one of these facilities, it's generally easier to get your dollars up front for capital improvements, buying land, building it. But you, every five years, you generally are paying those same kind of dollars in the maintenance of this. And it's either in maintenance and upkeep of the facilities, or maintenance and upkeep of staff members, equipment that's going to be back and forth to these facilities. So, just, you know, that's another one of those things you need to look at as a whole. So, when we say a hundred acres, yes, it's bigger than McKnight and Segal, but what is it going to do? What effect does it have on your neighbors? Because not every neighbor wants to have a sports field complex next to them with lighted fields and all. But again, what does it look like as far as your staff and your city's ability to maintain those fields and provide services to those fields? Because as I said, the leagues are getting stretched. Every parent that has a league, you know, is working every day, stretching out, doing as much as they can. And so that also then leads to, what do those fields look like? How are they maintained? And really gets back to, you know, critical issues on safety and security in those issues, which we're having to deal with much more today than when we could use to open the door up, let our kids run out in the neighborhood. They were the terror and not other issues that we're dealing with today. So, those are the kind of things. I just want to make sure as you look at that, you think about that, and it needs to be in this comprehensive form. This park is different than the other ones, it's in a different location. Your regional parks that you've got, either with McKnight and Segal and Barfield, you know, have worked very well. This is another component of that. I'm a planner. When I look at large tracks, I look at the west side of Murfreesboro, you're doubling your population. You know, middle Tennessee is supposed to be the size of Denver in 2035, where they're not, all coming to Nashville. So, as you look at doubling the size of Murfreesboro and your ability to get a piece of property in that area that can serve not only just for sports, but much like we did at Segal, we had emergency vehicles out there for police and fire and other things, look at it in that complex, because those certain services are going to be needed on the west side, and it may be the ability to have those kind of services integrated into a park system so that you can serve those long-term residents who will be part of Murfreesboro one day. And that's just my two cents worth. Thank you.
Mayor, Members of Council, to speak just for a second to the recreational needs outside of athletics, I'll take just a second. And as we all know, as the city of Murfreesboro continues to grow, the demand for active and passive recreational spaces grow as well. It's clearly evident by our overcrowding in park communities such as green spaces, playgrounds, and shelters. In 2015, we hosted 1,043 shelter rentals that led to right at fifty-three thousand dollars in revenue. From 2010 to 2015, we experienced an eighteen percent increase in those shelter rentals. Additionally, there's an increasing number of local organizations who desire to utilize our parks for festivals, events, and fundraisers. From 2010 to 2015, those five years, we experienced a twenty-three percent increase in the number of special use agreements we were able to accommodate. Yearly, we turned down dozens of those requests just due to lack of space. With the addition of a park on the west side of Murfreesboro that could potentially include a 5K track, concert area, and multipurpose green space, we could dramatically increase the amount of available space for tremendous local charitable impact. Finally, additional recreational space will provide great opportunities for internal programming such as arts, music, special events, and wellness. However, the programming area that stands to benefit most is outdoor recreation. In 2015, Outdoor Murfreesboro hosted 9,135 participants in its program, which translates to 27,000 user visits just from that small programming area of Outdoor Murfreesboro. So, with the addition of natural areas that we could have, such as hiking trails, natural play spaces, outdoor classrooms, the potential indoor programming space, we believe that we could easily double those numbers in that type of programming. So, that's kind of the other side of, when we're analyzing these types of properties, that's a critical side for us. That represents a huge in-demand program that's going to be sustainable for years, and will be able to help and also help host more events that really contribute locally. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have about outside the athletic side of what we're looking for and the current needs that we have. But that's just a really brief synopsis of what we're looking at, so. If you don't have any questions, I believe Mr. Crumley's going to discuss the incorporation of the 2035 plan.
And I'm going to be very short. In your documents, if you turn to 6.22, there's a tab for the Murfreesboro 2035 Plan, and the discussion's been very interesting between the need for neighborhood parks, which is clearly pointed out in the 2035 document, and the need for a regional park. They're both required. If you look at the bottom of 6.22, you see they define a neighborhood park as one to two acres. One to two acres cannot address the need for athletic fields. It does address some of those passive park needs, playgrounds, perhaps even small shelters, but it cannot address the need for athletic fields. If you look to the bottom, the regional parks, and look to the far right-hand side, you'll see there's a deficit in acreage projected for the larger regional parks, just as there is a deficit in acreage for those neighborhood park facilities. Flip one page to 6.24, and you'll see another table at the bottom of the page. And let me focus you on the fifth column from the left, where you see all the red numbers. That's our current position as measured against the 2014 national standard for various types of athletic fields and facilities. I'm really grateful to see Chad Gurkey here. You see the three asterisks besides football, and it says we're plus two fields in football. Well, Chad's been working on growth at the airfield. We know that we have at least one prospect for a new hangar, and may have a second prospect for a new hangar because of the runway work, the extension of the field. That requires two athletic fields, these two athletic fields here. Chad didn't have to come tonight. I gave him a pass that he didn't have to be here, but he said he was interested enough in the recreation needs that he felt like he ought to be here to address any questions about why those fields are going away. The only other pluses that you'll see in that column is one tennis court, and I still wonder what he measured, three soccer fields. Your park and rec staff has done wonders with juggling and scheduling to get as much playing time as possible on the turf fields we presently have. Some have mentioned the idea of the parks at the elementary schools, at the city school system. Strongly support that. That is a very, very affordable bridge to where we have to get in the future with recreation fields. And I use that term "bridge," it's a stopgap. It does not meet all those needs you see on 6.24 in that far right column, but it is an excellent tactic to bridge time to where a larger regional facility primarily aimed at athletic fields can be sited, located, and developed. This is a very long process. From the time that you all would give marching orders to your staff to begin to go acquire a piece of property, you can count a number of months before that would happen. That's going to be followed by a master planning process that will take at least another year before you would ever put a shovel on the ground on a new regional park. It's probably two years away realistically, maybe even a little longer than that. The development of that regional park would again take a number of years. It is not a magic one that can be waved to put those fields on the ground or to put facilities on the ground overnight. So, we're talking about a development of a park process that we're realistically talking about five years, perhaps even a little longer than that, before you've got a facility fully developed, ready for whatever comes down the road. We've covered a lot of ground very quickly tonight. If you have questions, I don't think we heard many questions about the need for fields. I think we all realize we're short on acres. We no longer have the luxury of having acres that we can use for play or for practice. So, we'll try to answer any questions you have about the work that's been done. The work that was done in 2013 on the nineteen sites that individuals proposed was very thorough. From memory, there were at least fifteen different characteristics that we each ranked. It was not a simple process. It included professional planners, professional consultants, and our other staff in looking at those parcels of property. But we're really at the point in time, we feel that, you know, we want to put the information in front of you and seek your guidance on where you need for us to be going.
Councilmembers?
Yeah, just a question. Was there any work when we evaluated these properties as far as their suitability for certain types of, I mean, what kind of prep work would have to be done, or that kind of? I know a lot of time, a lot of work had to be done, even at Segal, when we were preparing those fields, you know, and it gets to be an expensive process to take existing property and prepare it for fields. I wonder if that kind of dollars were evaluated?
Yes, sir. That was clearly one of the factors. You know Rutherford County better than I do, and you know how the rock is very close to the surface in areas of Rutherford County. Some of the sites proposed looked extremely good on the map from their location and the size of the parcel. And then when you get there and you find that it's really a piece of rock on top of the ground, it becomes more of a cost factor in development. In our evaluation, we did take into those issues of cost to prepare the site, to extend utilities. Some of these sites are very good but need a significant street or road built to provide access to them. The evaluation team looked at all of those factors and gave points on each one of those in the rating system.
The one thing that I would say to Eddie's point about the evaluation of this is that, and nobody's going to hear me talk down the need for ballparks, but I certainly feel that probably as much as anybody in the room. But primarily, at the present time, it's not so much place, time, and facilities as this practice. I mean, it's really hard for the teams that are existing teams to find practice space and safe places to practice. So, I certainly think there's an imminent need for that kind of addressing it. But Nick kind of spoke to this, is these additional amenities that are, truly enhance a community. Some of them we have in our existing park system, and some we don't. And we're beginning to talk about some providing these, and it's not just the west side. Some of the amenities that they've, that they had brought and put on the table for discussion are things that we don't even offer in our, in our park system presently, or at least not to the level that it's needed in our community. So, I think what, if I had to put words, and maybe it's my two cents worth too, is what the, what the parks and rec are asking is a canvas. To begin to define what the needs are, what is an efficient and cost-effective way to create a canvas of opportunity for our community. And I think it's appropriate for us to have that discussion, and it's necessary for us to have that discussion, because that particular side of our community, I mean, I get calls and have friends and have conversation with folks in different parts of the community about, why don't we have something over there on that side? And why don't we address that? So, again, I think what they're talking about is the need to provide them with a canvas to be able to flesh out and realize some of these things that a park system tries to do. And whether it be the largest parcel that's being offered or something else, I think it's very appropriate that we maybe plow a little different, maybe ask the questions as to what kind of amenities could be provided within this level of a 300-acre site or a 500-acre site, you know, begin to do some general dreaming as to what could be placed in there, given the topography, given the level of preparation that'd have to be done. Maybe we move from where we are now to a little bit more firmer idea of what the vision could be, and then it might be more clear what we're talking about. But I don't think that they were saying this as opposed to what the neighborhood park would be. I mean, this is just another component to that. I think, I think that's what the Parks and Rec were talking about.
I don't think of Sportscom or Segal Park as neighborhood parks, personally.
Right.
I mean, but they're not a hundred acres.
Right.
And so I think of those as large parks. The concern that I've got is this vision that I think some people have of this mega park being out there, that's going to be six hundred and something acres outside the city limits of Murfreesboro, which is my other problem, on a substandard highway that has been substandard for my entire lifetime. And if I lived out there, that would be an absolute nightmare for me to have a facility go in that's going to attract that many people to one place. It would make so much more sense to me, and I'm trying to use common sense on this, to have three, two or three, or maybe even four 100-acre plots where we could have soccer fields at one place, baseball fields at another, so that you're not constantly sending everybody to one location. I mean, it's like, you know, MTSU during football games, if everybody shows up at one place, then you've got a huge traffic jam. And when we're looking at our sports facilities that are used almost on a daily basis, do you really want all the traffic to go to one place? I just think it would be better to have them more diversified so that you don't wind up with all the traffic in one place or the other. Another thing that has changed significantly from where we were to where we are today is when... we were to where we are today is when you look at Mitchell Nelson Neighborhood, or you look at Reese Rogers Neighborhood, or Hobgood Neighborhood, Bellwood, those neighborhoods were not built with the intentions of having walking trails, sidewalks, swimming pools. But if you go out to the western side of town where the growth and development is, the planning is so much better now that when we do build a neighborhood, we do see swimming pools. Berkshire Neighborhood, I think they've got two swimming pools in the neighborhood. They've got a walking trail through their neighborhood. So their needs are not the same needs that would have been needed 25 years ago when you were looking at building Sportscom. So the environment has changed, the demand of, you know, a safe place to go and walk. They already have those things in place, and we're putting those things in place with the planning of the new neighborhoods and the way we're planning them much more efficiently with green spaces and stuff in them and water retention areas with walking trails around them. And I just think we're doing a much better job of preparing. When we look at the space we're talking about here, they don't consider Stone's River Battlefield as anything on here, other than, I mean, it's not a tree with a circle around it, which I guess is assuming that's some type of a park facility. It, I mean, I have to look at Stone's River Battlefield and think of that, for me, as a passive recreation area, where you could go and jog and ride your bicycle and walk nature trails, and there's a lot of things there. I mean, it's basically where parks came from. I mean, originally the whole concept of parks came from many, many years ago when people would go to the cemetery and ride through the cemetery and use the cemetery basically as parks. And they said, hey, this is a great idea, but we shouldn't have to do it at a cemetery, and that's where parks began. So it, we need to look at it from a perspective of, what impact are we going to have on a particular area when we do this? And who are we really trying to service it for? If we could put, I think what the direction that I personally would like for us to see is, I think Segal Park is a good example of a park that is primarily for one purpose. And I would like for us to have 100 acres of baseball fields, 100 acres of soccer fields, and not have them conflicting over the park and not have them conflicting over the traffic flow trying to get to the location. The vision is trying to spread it out, and it's not so much for just coinciding with the 2035 plan, but that makes more sense. I mean, it, so, but I'll assure you, after coaching 38 years in Murfreesboro and been on the Parks and Rec Board for the last four years, there's nobody who recognizes more the need for ball facilities than I do. So don't get the impression that I'm against anything that involves building ball fields. I'm 100% supportive. I just don't want us to go down the road of saying, here's the perfect spot, let's build everything on this one spot just because this is where, some report came back and said, this is where you need to do everything. Because I think the report has missed the target in the sense of, we need to diversify these things so that we don't impact one area so harshly. Spread it out a little bit, I guess, is what my point is.
You know, Mayor, I think we had mentioned to you, this wasn't a meeting for us to make any decisions, and we wanted to share where we've been with you. We're listening, we're taking notes. What I, if you, you all may have other questions, but I think what makes sense to me would be for staff to take the feedback we've heard from the council today, pick it up, play with it, analyze it, and give some thought to some different options. In the meanwhile, if you have other ideas and questions, if you would call myself or Mr. Goodwin, we can add to that conversation, and then maybe let's take 30 days to come back to you with kind of a second round of thought between the report and your conversation.
Let's, I want to summarize, and I think summarize what everyone has said, that no one doubts the need that we, that we currently need to put some ball fields and different things on the, on the ground. But give us a couple of options. Is the 500-acre option on the site on 96, okay, we've got that option. Then we have the other options. If we do something not as small, but, or not as big, but a couple of different options where we really could go out and do two or three different facilities. You know, I see that the Pike Farm, you've got several that you see that are, that are there. So give us a couple of options.
We'll do, and I know a lot of the conversation's been about ball fields, and that's important. But, you know, Mr. Williams' comments aren't lost on, on any of us, that there are other recreational needs that are facing our community and enjoyed by our residents. You know, I've gotten more than one comment about ice hockey and figure skating. There's a demand for, you know, that sport, which isn't here in Rutherford County. Lacrosse is rapidly growing. I mean, there's other recreational needs that, you know, I know your team is well tuned into. So we'll, we'll take the feedback that we've heard. I imagine this will generate additional conversation in the community. We'll try to use social media to get some feedback on that as well, and then we'll plan on coming back to you in 30 days with kind of a second round of thoughts to bounce off of you.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Yes, sir. No, go ahead.
Rob, in, when we come back in, let's say, 30 days, 40 days, we're going to need another school site out there. So I'd like for you to incorporate maybe some ideas from our school, school board and see what, what their intentions are and where they are, and do they want to partner with us on a park school, which would happen for the large area, but wouldn't be enough acreage for some of the smaller areas.
Mr. Crumley met with Dr. Gilbert about that last week, I believe, so we'll be glad to bring that into the conversation.
You're tuned in on that frequency, then, good.
Good suggestion. Thank you.
We'll stand adjourned, and then we'll start our regular 7 o'clock meeting.